All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our evening City Commission meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start off our meeting with a moment of silence and then we'll move to a Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would please join me in standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we will have a roll call.
Commissioner Repart?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. All right, next, we are gonna have public comment, but before going to our first opportunity for public comment, I'd like to walk you through the rules, especially if this is your first time joining us for our City Commission meeting. So hopefully you have the agenda in front of you and you can see the full agenda. And in the box on the very first page, you'll see some expected procedures for this meeting, and I just wanna draw your attention to a couple of them. During the public comment period, we give folks three minutes to speak. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and also that you write your name over here on the clipboard. You can come up here and stand up. We ask you to speak at this podium. If there's not someone standing, I close the public comment period and we move on. A couple other things to point out. We wanna make sure that this is a safe place for everyone, so we do not allow clapping or cheering, so we ask you to just be really respectful of the people who are speaking, even if you disagree or you agree with them. And then secondly, we ask you to refrain from swearing, name-calling, making derogatory comments, especially about anyone's race, religion, or nation of origin. And so this first opportunity for public comment, we have multiple opportunities for public comment tonight. The very first one is public comment on something that we are actually voting on tonight. So in the first opportunity for public comment, I'm gonna ask you to be explicit about what item you're speaking to. And then later on in the agenda, we have a scheduled public hearing. So if you are here tonight to be heard, to file an appeal for downtown improvement district special assessment, that public hearing is a little bit later, so I'm gonna ask you just to sit tight. And then when I open up that public comment period, we will hear that. This body serves as a board of appeal for those appeals. And then at the very end of the meeting, we have public comment about any other item. So I'll open up the first opportunity for public comment, and again, this is public comment on items that we're actually voting on tonight. So if you're here to speak on something we're voting on, now's the time to come forward. Right? Does anyone wanna speak on public? It is on the agenda. Yep. Mr. Miller, go ahead.
Good evening, fellow veterans and citizens of Grand Rapids. This is the House of People, Watchdog Miller reporting on, you know, some significant race Atari here, 11-7, many times asked you to review, 8-5-9-9-0. And under 11-7, it's crude move right back here, just keep them back. You don't like the public's vote, keep coming back on it? No, we need to desegregate the cities, and where I have standing, you have exposure, is getting our Catholic bus routes back here. There's why on earth is we have this back on the agenda? It looks like their crowd was not notified, so on numerous grounds, they have a right to sue. 9A2, Lynn Rabo, she apparently runs a huge northeast side neighborhood group, which is way too large and unwieldy, fails to include our neighborhood, for example, and that should be chopped up into more manageable neighborhoods. I tried to get on her mailing list, heard nothing from her. As you know, she served one term and left after four years. One button, the budget got too tight for her. 93, for 60 grand of lobbying, the public, people should get notification, such as me, your watchdogs and your regulars, on everything they're lobbying for, everything they're lobbying for in regards to urban matters, such as the Rapid and matters that you have. And back to the race Susitari, the new Attorney General is just flat-out saying she's not gonna honor and enforce certain laws, so you certainly have a right to push back. She does what she pleases, and we citizens of Grand Rapids have the same right to, if we don't like the laws. And Snyder, as you know, just packs many of these panels with pro-business people. And a race Susitari matter is certainly worth fighting and so deplorable that they got no notice. I saw no notice in the paper. On six, you want 184 grand, that's too vague. A.G. Gallagher, what professional services? And why are they professional? And that's another hole in the budget. Five, Trudy C. Five, buses don't, fewer buses go down division between wealthy and cherry. So that's a matter to consider, 3 million bucks, consider prioritizing.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, your time's up. Thanks.
I actually thought it was gonna hit balance.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate them. Hi, welcome.
I'm Teresa Amshuler. I'm here for the small cell ordinance, as you guys know. I don't really have anything prepared to speak tonight. I just wanted to thank you guys for your actions and for your questions that you asked last week, and for being against 5G in, you know, a broad sense. I know there's, I don't wanna say that you guys are against it, but you know what I mean. And I also just wanted to pass along that Louisiana House passed Resolution HR 145 to study the health effects of 5G due to health concerns, so, you know, maybe that's something that the city could put something out there for. That's it. Thank you, ladies.
Great, thank you. Appreciate seeing you again. All right, anyone else? Okay, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close that opportunity for public comment, and that will take us to our next item, and this is approval of our minutes, and these are our minutes from our very last session, which happened last week, so can I get a motion?
Some votes.
Support.
All right, any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications.
The first one is a communication received from the East Town Community Association expressing support for a city charter amendment.
That is received and filed.
And communication received from Nikki Moore, expressing gratitude to the City Commission for listening to the public's input regarding the 5G ordinance.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to reports of city officers.
The first one is a comptroller's report for the period of May 23, 2019, through May 29, 2019, in the amount of $9,419,296.63.
That is received and filed.
And the treasurer's report for the period of May 18, 2019, through May 28, 2019.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda, and our consent agenda includes items that we talked about this morning and one of our standing committee meetings, and where the vote was unanimous. So tonight with one voice vote, we will adopt those items. So can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Both.
Support.
All right, commissioners, any questions or comments? We had a busy day. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and commissioners, we have several before us tonight. We'll start with the first one.
The first ordinance is amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2018-35 for fiscal year 2019, Amendment Number 18.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Jones, you wanna tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor, this morning we had a number of items, actually 15, as part of the budget ordinance, and a couple I wanna bring to our attention in particular. One was an appropriation for the Risk Management Department that was connected to overages due to the polar vortex this past winter. The other is a contingent account request for the elimination of the fiscal 2019 projected fund balance deficit for the district court. And the third is a number of reimbursements to the Engineering Department for everything from bridges to pavement repairs and restoration and reconstruction, and there was a change in the contingent balance of $500,000, so now the contingent balance is $1,000,000,144,828.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. And can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that'll take us to our second ordinance before us tonight.
It's an ordinance amending Section 9.907 of Chapter 173, Title IX of the Grand Rapids City Code related to violations of the fireworks ordinance.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Sorry. I think because it's a different section, they have to be separate.
So this section is about dates and times for fireworks, so right now, there's 30 different days and times, and this ordinance kind of shrinks that down to 11 or 12 days a year, and also shrinks the times a little bit. I can read the times off, I guess. They can be, fireworks can be discharged at 9:00 AM on December 31 until 1:00 AM on January 1, Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day until 11:45 on each of those days, June 29 to July 4 until 11:45, July 5, if that date's a Friday or Saturday, until 11:45 on the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day until 11:45. So if we pass this tonight, that gives us time to put it into effect before the July 4 holiday.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Definitely wanna make a comment about this, because we have been getting many emails about this, because there's always confusion as to why we even have this fireworks ordinance. In 2011, the state passed a law allowing consumer fireworks, and these are the ones that typically would've been used by firemen and others at celebrations for the Fourth of July. So that happened to be a very dry summer. You may recall that one of our parks had a grass fire as a result of a firework being shot off where it was not supposed to be. You can't do those in public parks. Two years later, after getting lots of emails and phone calls protesting the state law, we were able to get permission from the state to reduce the number of days that they are being used, and this now, thanks to cities across the state also protesting and fire departments reporting fires and other problems due to, even the police department having to try to respond all over the city to complaints, they've reduced the days further. So we are thrilled that that has been the case. Some of us around this table would probably like to see them banned altogether, but I just wanted to make it clear that this was something that was not a City Commission law. This was something that was, we were preempted on.
Yeah, thank you, and I wanna thank our fire department, especially Rick Doctor and Chief Layman who've worked on this, really appreciate all your work. All right, anything else, commissioners? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and can I get a motion to give it immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next two commissioners are companion ordinances, so we'll go to the third one.
Yep, ordinance amending Section 9.905 of Chapter 173, Title IX of the Grand Rapids City Code related to the definitions in the fireworks ordinance.
All right, can I get a motion?
Moved.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Lanier, you wanna tell us about this?
Yeah, just briefly, it's the same stuff, different section. Well said. Yes, an update, you know, we had the first reading last week, and here we are, to vote on it.
Well said, all right. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, this is also a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and can I get a motion to give it immediate effect?
Moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, it'll take us to our fourth ordinance tonight.
Ordinance amending Section 9.857.173 of Chapter 170, Title IX of the Grand Rapids City Code related to fines for violations of the fireworks ordinance.
All right, can I get a motion?
Moved.
Support.
Commissioner Moody, you wanna tell us about this?
Yes, ma'am, this is the one that's gonna cost a lot of people to get in trouble. This ordinance is the amendment which is being made to bring civil infraction fines against compliances with the Act. The state now requires that the city impose a civil fine of $1,000 for each violation of the ordinance, and no other fines and sanctions. Presently, the fines are at this point $50 for each offense, $100 for a repeat offense, $200 for the second and subsequent offenses. This ordinance will go into effect June, June the 28th, 2019, and it will be in account as of July the 24th holiday.
Thank you. And I think it's important to also say, the state is mandating this fee, typically in the past, we've been able to set it, but they also are requiring 50% of this fine, so $500 per infraction, to go to public safety, recognizing that these state laws have resulted in a pretty significant increase in work for both police and fire departments throughout the state. So, all right, commissioners, any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and can I get a motion to give it immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that'll take us to our fifth ordinance tonight.
An ordinance amending Section 1.263 of Article 2, Chapter 7, of Title 1 of the Code of the City of Grand Rapids, Section 1.263, Employer Contributions.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved. Support.
Commissioner Kelly, you wanna tell us about this?
Yes, annually, during preparation of the fiscal plan, estimates for the police and fire pension contribution amounts are used based on the previous year's December 31 actuarial valuation report. Once that is updated to us, then the annual contribution amounts are updated for the final fiscal plan. Differences in the valuations can sometimes lead to significant changes to the estimates, and these changes make it difficult for accurate financial planning, and may result in significant adjustments that need to be incorporated into the final plan. To alleviate this issue for the FY 2020 fiscal plan that we just worked on, and going forward, the city's implementing an 18-month delay from the date of the actuarial report for incorporation in the fiscal plan. This change has been modeled by the actuarial firm and presented to the Police and Fire Pension Board, who did not oppose the change, and this is just to give us a little bit more time because of market fluctuations.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions about this? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and can I get a motion to give it immediate effect?
Moved.
Some support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next is an ordinance, oh, go ahead. Taking your job.
That's fine. Ordinance amending Section 1.192, subsection 14, definitions of Article 1, Chapter 7, Title 1 of the Code of the City of Grand Rapids being the general pension system.
All right, can I get a motion?
Moved.
Support.
Commissioner O'Connor, former member of our pension board, now that is falls to Commissioner Moody, you wanna tell us about this?
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this amendment is to remove the Lakeland Library Cooperative and the City of Grand Rapids General Retirement System as employers, leaving only the City of Grand Rapids. Lakeland is being removed because they no longer have any active members in the retirement system. The City of Grand Rapids General Retirement System is being removed because even though both retirement systems pay employer contributions on behalf of the four members in the pension system office, since their payroll is run through the city's payroll system, it is sufficient to define the employer as the City of Grand Rapids.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, so next item, I have two calls. One, this was, there was a request by a commissioner from our last meeting to bring back up an item for reconsideration, so to start us off, I need a motion to reconsider.
So moved.
Moved.
All those in favor of reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so we have an ordinance up for reconsideration. Do you wanna tee this up, City Clerk? And then I think I'll turn to our city manager, and we'll provide some additional information based on a number of questions that many of you had after last week's meeting.
Okay, so this is...
(inaudible) to vote against.
Order? He's out of order.
No, you're out of order. We're following the rules, our standing rules. So in order to have an item reconsidered, an individual who voted against it at our last meeting has to make the motion for reconsideration, and that was done. So this motion is back up for reconsideration, so we'll start with our city clerk. I'll turn to city manager. We'll get some information from staff to answer questions, and then we'll decide how to move forward.
Okay, so this is an ordinance regarding small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way.
Thank you. So, city manager, do you want to, do you want to? I could've said that.
Thanks, city clerk.
You're working well as a team.
I'm following the rules.
Right, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I wanna thank the commission and public again for the feedback and deliberation last week. I know this was a very well-debated topic that resulted in the vote, the ordinance, in a 3-3 vote. It was not a majority either way, but I do appreciate the reconsideration this week because there are important reasons for both legally as well as the protection of the health and safety of the public that it should be reconsidered. Unfortunately, Deputy City Manager Eric DeLonge is unable to be with us tonight, but we have a team of well-capable employees that will be helping us in educating both commission and public on the reasons why it is important for us to reconsider this. Our managing director, Suzanne Schills, along with our Legislative Affairs Manager, Karen Farrick, and our Sustainability Performance Manager, Allison Sutter, and outside counsel will be part of city staff that will be helping us understand a couple of things. One is the background that led to the FCC ruling on the regulation of small cell communications and the legislative history that we've had here within the state that also, to some degree, preempted the city's ability to regulate within certain boundaries. And we will also, in response to some of the inquiries last week, speak to what our local effort has been in both trying to manage, manage the risk associated with those preemptions, both at the state and federal level, but also be very responsive to what we heard last week, were concerns about the environmental and public health risks that some of the technology may pose to the public. And finally, I will ask our outside counsel to talk about our legal options and the consequences of doing nothing in terms of adopting a local ordinance, and the reason why it's in the best interest of our public health and safety to move forward with responsible local legislation. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our Legislative Affairs Manager, Ms. Karen Farrick.
Thank you. So I'm gonna get us started with a little bit of the background on the legislative timeline. Senate Bill 637 was introduced in October of 2017, and subsequently signed into law as Public Act 365 of 2018 on December 12th of 2018. Senate Bill 637 was on the agenda or discussed at the Legislative Committee here at the city at five meetings between December of 2017 and 2018. The city expressed concern and opposition in letters to both the House and Senate Committees reviewing the legislation in December of 2017 and March and October of 2018. Multiple meetings were held with city staff, the Michigan Municipal League, the Michigan Township Association, Grand Valley Metro Council, and the Urban Metro Mayors and Managers. These meetings were held to discuss impacts and options between 2017 and 18. There was also an FCC ruling that was issued on September 26th of 2018 that became effective January of this year. And in December of 2018, we joined with other cities through the U.S. Conference of Mayors to actively pursue challenging these decisions coming from the FCC. The city also negotiated for agreements with telecom providers, and they were approved by the city between 2015 and 2018 to allow for a streamlined permitting process. Due to changes in state and federal law and policy, ordinance drafting began in March of 2019. A presentation was made to the Community Development Committee on May 21st to schedule the June 4 consideration, and on June 4, the City Commission considered the ordinance.
Hello, I am Allison Sutter, and as the city manager stated, I'm gonna take a few minutes now just to review the status of some of the environmental and public health concerns in response to some of the testimony that was given. So a few high-level taking us back, in 1996, that's when the FCC revised their guidelines with respect to radio frequency. And so I want to call out there that these are guidelines, they are not standards, but the last time that they updated these guidelines was in 1996. And I do wanna call out that there are different guidelines with respect to a cellphone and with respect to small cell technology, or cellphone towers, or other devices that are being used. In 2011, the International Agency for Research on Cancer classified electromagnetic fields produced by cellphones as possibly carcinogenic to humans. That determination means that when there is a causal association, is concerned, is considered credible, but when chance, bias, or confounding cannot be ruled out with reasonable confidence. And so just to put into perspective, another item that is also in the same category as being considered possibly carcinogenic is gasoline. And so that finding was made in 2011. And since that time, there have been a number of organizations that have done some thorough research and pulling health-based articles in journal publications and trying to determine what the scientific research states with respect to public health impacts. And by and large, you can see here, I've cited some of them, but the National Cancer Institute, which is a part of the NIH, the World Health Organization, the European Union, and Health Canada. And I like the way that Health Canada has concluded the findings and says, "The vast majority of scientific research to date does not support a link between radio frequency energy exposure and human cancers. But the evidence of a possible link between radio frequency energy exposure and cancer risk is far from conclusive, and more research is needed to clarify this possible link." And so, really, at that time now, we've had some other scientific studies that have come out that are concluding that more serious health concerns could exist, particularly in light of the increased usage of devices, more 5G and 4G being deployed throughout urban areas, just longer frequency of use over a life period from when they were studying it before. I do wanna make mention that Montgomery County, Maryland, took it upon themselves to request that a study was done locally after some small cell technology was deployed, where they wanted to go in and try to measure the exposure that was happening around that. And a local company that they worked with to do this study found that if you were looking at kind of three traditional small-scale technologies being installed that have kind of normal power limits, that they found that you were, those were needed to be 11 feet from a dwelling unit to stay below the FCC exposure guidelines. So a couple other points, the same county in Maryland did sue the FCC with a goal of forcing them to update the radio frequency emission standards for small cell antennas. And then actually, just a couple months ago, in April of 2019, there were three U.S. representatives that requested the FCC provide more specific health-related studies be conducted on 5G and on small cells. And there were a couple municipalities that have also sent letters to the FCC, also requesting that they, that the FCC do some further research on this topic, and those included Eugene, Oregon, and Hallandale Beach, Florida. The FCC responded essentially that they have guidelines that have been established and that they rely on other public health-based agencies such as the EPA and the FDA to come up with health-based guidelines and information with respect to the technology. So lastly, I just wanted to note that we did reach out to our partners at Kent County Health Department and asked... Health Department and asked where their work may be on this topic, and they indicated that both at the county level and at the state level for the health department, that no research has been done to date, and they haven't taken or made a statement on this topic. They typically rely on the CDC, which has fallen in line with kind of the WHO and the European Union's really saying there is not conclusive evidence of a link, but also advocating that additional research be done.
Welcome back.
Thanks for having me, I appreciate it. My name is Alex Thibodeau, I am with Foster Swift Collins &amp; Smith, and I've been serving as outside counsel on this particular issue. In my review, there's really four potential options that the city commission could take in regard to this small cell ordinance. The first one is to adopt the ordinance and continue monitoring the technology, develop additional administrative rules, and use those rules to attempt to preserve as much municipal control as possible. It would also be a way to address some of the concerns as they develop and incorporate new information, new research, as technology and research is furthered. The second option would be to adopt the ordinance as written and then enforce it as written with no additional changes. The third option would be to decline to adopt the ordinance today and accept all applications that do not materially interfere with traffic, sightlines, the Americans with Disabilities Act, public utilities, or drainage. Act 365 lists nine reasons for denial of a small cell permit. Five of those nine reasons pertain to the things I just mentioned. Those are things that are kind of built in to the act that would allow the commission to deny those applications for those reasons. The remaining four denial reasons are for things like spacing, concealment, and stealth provisions, things that would help the city to actively regulate the small cell co-locations, and would give you an ability to decide what that technology actually looks like in your right-of-way and take measures to protect the public. Without an ordinance in place, you're not able to address those remaining four concerns. The fourth option, obviously, is to decline to adopt and take no action on applications. That doesn't necessarily result in no small cell facilities coming into your right-of-way. Rather, that would result in small cell wireless providers submitting applications. The Act 365 has a built-in shot clock that would automatically approve applications that are not denied for one of the nine reasons mentioned. Therefore, taking no action would simply allow wireless providers to submit applications, receive automatic approval, and the city would be without recourse for implementing any sort of regulation over those particular applications. There are a number of consequences that would come with the decision not to implement some sort of regulation regarding small cell technology. First would be, as I mentioned, the inability to deny applications that are received. As I said, there's a shot clock provision that would automatically approve applications that are not otherwise denied within the timeline. Second would be the inability to enforce the spacing, stealth, and concealment measures, again, that I mentioned earlier. Those are measures that would go a long way to both protect the right-of-way, protect the way it looks, and allow the city to take measures to force co-locations into certain areas, restrict them from others, and ensure that when applications are received, at least initially, they'll be spread out far enough that the 11-foot, for example, that Ms. Sutter mentioned, would be allowed to exist, the 11-foot distance to control for RF waves. The third consequence would be an inability to require insurance coverage. One of the things built into the ordinance is, well, built into the ordinance and the non-exclusive microcell agreement, which is essentially the contract that governs a permit that's issued, are insurance provisions that would require wireless providers to have insurance for property and personal damage that occurs as a result of the construction, implementation, or use of small cell facilities. So, without an ordinance in place that would allow that, a wireless provider could come in without insurance, without insurance provisions, and as long as their application was otherwise compliant, it would be deemed accepted under Act 365. Fourth, the inability to require removal and return of right-of-way to its original state before implementation of a facility. Again, the ordinance has built into it provisions that require certain aspects of a construction project leading to a co-location, as well as the removal of that small cell facility from the right-of-way, that would require a small cell provider to pay for those removals, forces them to actually remove them when their contract is expired, and then also forces them to return their right-of-way to its original condition before the implementation occurred. Without an ordinance in place, that would not be possible to enforce. Fifth, the ability to collect fees. As you know, Act 365 dramatically reduced the fees that are allowed under or for a permit for co-location, but there are still fees allowed, including make-ready work provisions. Make-ready work provisions are provisions which allow the city to be reimbursed for any costs of preparing the right-of-way for a potential installation. Without an ordinance in place, again, you would be in a position where you would not be able to collect those fees, and to reiterate, that would not prevent small cell facilities from coming in, it would simply prevent your ability to collect fees for them. Finally, proliferation of devices, that really speaks to the spacing requirements. To the extent that applications for 5G or for small cell facilities are received in droves, the ability to regulate them through spacing provisions will at least preserve the city's ability to ensure that they are not all located in the same space, ensure that all of them are not located in the most prime real estate right downtown, and ensure that when those applications are received, they are adequately spaced out and denied for non-compliance with those spacing requirements. And then, obviously, the last point is abdication of available control, which is really kind of the catch-all point. You lose your ability to control what this looks like, you lose your ability to enforce provisions that would otherwise benefit the city in the implementation of this inevitable Just to give an idea of what the alternatives would be, this is kind of what most wireless providers would like to see, these ground units with a number of small cell facilities located right there, right on the ground, right within the right-of-way. What would be a considerably better option is the next generation of what this pole would look like. As you can see by the rendering there, much more efficient, much more desirable-looking technology, and much less obtrusive to pedestrians within the right-of-way. I do appreciate the many, many citizen communications that the commission has received and that I've gotten the chance to see. Many of those received early on were implemented in the initial drafting of the ordinance. Many of those still that we've received after the fact were verified that we actually do have provisions that addressed many of those concerns within the ordinance already that have already been written in. However, included in the original ordinance's language is Section 7.687, which essentially allows the city to adopt administrative rules after the passage of this ordinance, again, to respond to new technology, to respond to more information as it comes in. And essentially, it would give the ability for the city to add additional rules as we go along, to respond to citizen concerns. Some of those administrative rules that we've considered, monitoring RF emissions, which is radio frequency emissions, for approved installations, and reporting those emission levels to the public. Spacing requirements, as I mentioned before, that is one of the most important aspects of the ordinance, is enforcing those spacing limitations to ensure that facilities aren't all located in the same spots. Clarifying and maybe perhaps adding additional American with Disabilities or other disability provisions as necessary with the implementation of this technology. Providing notice of installations to community members within a particular distance of proposed co-location. And then, again, a formalized process for responding to applications and issuing permits. All of those could be implemented through administrative rules and would give the city the ability not only to rely on exactly what the ordinance says today, but allow that to be an adaptive process that could change along with this quickly-changing technology. Certainly, the city plans to continue to monitor and research the health impacts and collaborate with the Kent County Health Department and other health partners in our city to determine, you know, the effects of this technology. I believe that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And as we conclude, I want to thank the staff again for their work, and we did have conversations with the county administrator and county board chair about that collaboration around education, and again, they confirmed, like the staff did, that this is not a space that they've worked in yet. They're interested to learn more before deciding what role that they might have, but we certainly want to collaborate with them and any other health providers in our community who would like to educate the public and consumers about safety around these matters. But again, to just reemphasize that if this body, again, decides not to adopt the ordinance, the opposite effect will occur in terms of protecting the public health and safety. We would have less regulated ability to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, I'll open up for comments, questions. Commissioner Kelly, you brought this back up for reconsideration. Do you want to make any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank Alex for your explanation, Allison and Karen, and all of staff, because I know you worked all weekend on this as a result, as many of us did. I was researching this too over the weekend. As we moved through this whole process, we were, I think, more focused, I know we were more focused on local control of the fees, and the health issues were not so much on our radar. So, we also owe a debt of gratitude to our residents who came out in force and brought these concerns to our attention and began to do this as we moved closer to this. We did have a relatively short amount of time, not enough time to even have a public hearing about this, but last week, it turned out to be pretty much a public hearing. So, again, we thank all those folks for their concerns and bringing those to our attention. I support option one because I do think we need to monitor this, not as well as pass it. And I do trust, having heard from many residents, that they are going to continue to work with us, to reach out to the county and encourage them to do what other counties have done in California and Connecticut and other cities, and put out some health alerts so that people, especially parents of small children, will just be cognizant of the concerns. Again, we don't know for sure all of the correlations, but I've read enough to know that I'm going to be trying to protect my children and grandchildren, and myself, particularly when I'm, for example, in a car, riding, and you're contained in a metal or on an elevator, for example, because our cell phones will work even harder to receive a signal. So, I just, again, think that we are over a barrel here. We don't have a whole lot we can do about it. There certainly will be some technology advantages to this too in terms of the speed with which we can receive information that will also, I think, sometimes positively impact health, but this is something that I think we need to take very seriously, and I'm just really appreciative of the conversation that we had around the table. I know we all agonized about this last week, particularly when there's so much coming at us lately, and we knew that it was going to be an extra burden on our city manager, our city attorney, and our staff. So, that's it.
Great, thanks. Any other comments, Commissioner?
Thank you, City Manager and team, for all of the hard work that has gone into kind of putting together this presentation and sharing the updates and all the research that you've been a part of. I'm very appreciative of that, and I agree with Commissioner Kelly in pretty much everything she said. I know I was opposing this last week, and, you know, really, I think there are a couple things that I learned from that process, and one of those things was that when there are things this significant that are being considered, you know, I don't know, as the topics are being considered, how are we determining which agenda to put them on? But I think this was a topic that probably should have come to Cal, and there should have been a vote for a public hearing. And I think so between CD, although we started asking those questions there, I think between CD, when it did become public, and last week's meeting, there were a number of emails or comments that came in that kind of alerted to, at least for me, alerted us to some of the more challenging health risks. And then I think, like you said, Commissioner, last meeting became the public hearing, and it was by chance. And that's, to me, not the best way to do business as a governmental official. And so, I think that was a really good lesson to learn. I also think that the lack of understanding and the lack of knowledge from our local health department, the state of Michigan, the FCC, I think, all of that says to me that we are not ready to be in a position, though I understand the dynamics that we're in, I don't feel comfortable, my conscience does not, the foundational principles that I use to make decisions here, I don't feel comfortable with making a decision because I am lacking information. And that's one of the things that I have kind of on my foundational principle list is having enough knowledge of what it is that I'm deciding, because what I don't want is for my children and their children to suffer from a decision that I've made today, knowing that I'm ignorant to the outcomes of that. So, I personally can't support it as much as I am very appreciative of the work that has gone into it. I do have a couple follow-up questions. One of them is, if my memory serves me correctly, last meeting, we talked a little bit about June 9th being a deadline of some sort, and because today is the 11th, I'm curious to know what are the ramifications of it being the 11th and past the 9th. The second question I have is, we had information from another ordinance that had been sent to us that talked a little bit about public notice, and so I'm curious to know, you know, how do we institute that into the ordinance that is back for reconsideration so that there could be some level of engagement? And I know I've been talking about campaigns and awareness campaigns, "Don't Kill Me Doug", but I'm wondering if there is a way for us to bring some awareness to the community about this so that they can be, you know, equally informed, so that they're having the same conversations with their family members about elevators and things of them cars and things of that nature? And so, just curious about those things as we need to move forward in the event that this passes tonight.
Yeah, I'll begin. First of all, thank you for your feedback. I actually concur with what you said in terms of an ideal situation to have more public deliberation, although there was sufficient committee discussion since 2017, 18, and some discussion this year. I want to credit Managing Director Suzanne Schultz for bringing the need to adopt the local ordinance to our attention before the June 9th deadline, for some reason, and I have no excuse, I just take full accountability, it did not happen earlier. But as soon as we were aware of the need to have this public discussion, it was such that we only had two meetings left, and your points were well-made. It certainly could have happened a lot earlier. With regard to the June 11th implementation, should the ordinance be adopted today and what happens between the 9th, which was the weekend? So, really, what we're talking about is how will we treat applications that were received yesterday and today? And I asked the question of how many? We don't have that number yet, we're still checking, but it would be those that we would have to evaluate how to treat their requests in light of both state law and the lack of our local ordinance, and I just don't have that answer right now.
Well, we do know...
How many? I'm sorry.
Well, we do know people have a...
I do not. We don't have that answer. I asked Ms. Schultz, and I don't think we have that answer at this point.
Okay.
I don't have that answer, but...
The City Manager said...
But I will say that we do currently have contracts with cell providers, and so those contracts are still in place. So, I wouldn't expect in two days that we'd have, like, a whole new cell provider come in and do that. So, I feel that we're covered. They can provide us the 60-day notice... They can provide us the 60-day notice, though, to exhaust that contract, and then we would be in a place where we don't have any of those protections. And the key to this is really right-of-way management and trying to have those protections that we've enjoyed and be able to have some of that control, which this would not, if we didn't have the ordinance, wouldn't allow.
Thank you.
And then to the other point about notification, I think what our intent is, is to, again, as we highlighted earlier, as Ms. Thibodeau highlighted, to make those administrative rules not built into the ordinance, so the staff would come back. And my past experience around these requirements is that that too should, there should be some type of engagement around administrative rules, both with the cell providers as well as some community, and we need to plan that out, and hopefully we will have those rules developed within the next 60 days. That's on the long end, so hopefully it'll be shorter than that. Mr. Delonge's not here, so I'm committing net fore.
All right. Thank you.
All right. All right, Commissioners, any other comments before I call the question? Commissioner?
Yeah, I just, you know, I understand the frustrations and concerns. It's just I think the biggest frustration for me is still this desire of people at other levels of government to take away our local control. And it's, it happens, you know, federal down to state and state down to local. Everyone preaches the tenets of giving, you know, appreciating and wanting to have local control until, you know, the local enterprise, local government, they don't agree with what they want to do. And it's really, really frustrating. And so, you know, my vote last week was essentially a protest vote about the fact that we don't have local control anymore. And so I'll probably change my vote tonight, but.
Thank you. I think we all share that frustration, but we also.
Short protest.
In light of the parameters that we live under now with this preemption bill, trying to figure out what we can do within those limitations. So I think all of us share your protest. All right, Commissioners, this is a roll call vote tonight, so I will turn to our city clerk.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
No.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
And Mayor Bliss?
Yes. And can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
It carries. All right, thank you, Commissioners, and I'll add my thanks to all the staff that worked diligently this past week to provide us with additional information so we can make good decisions. Thanks. All right, Commissioners, we have no city commission resolutions tonight. That will next take us to our scheduled public hearing. So this is a public hearing where this body, the city commission, is going to hear appeals on the 2019 Downtown Improvement District Special Assessment Rule Number 8742. And let's see, we have a PowerPoint or no? Nope, all right. Sorry, I thought Allison was teeing up a PowerPoint. I'm like, we don't usually have a PowerPoint for these.
No, sorry.
Well, welcome. Thank you for being here and providing us some background on this, and then I'll open it up to see if anyone is here to be heard.
Okay, my name's Paula Jastifer. I represent the City Assessor's Office, and tonight, at the request of the Downtown Improvement District Board, the Assessor's Office has prepared Special Assessment Rule 8742 in accordance with the district's plan that was adopted back in 2015. It was a five-year plan. This is the fifth year. Property owners were sent notices April 25th of 2019 and notified of the charge and the appeal process. The special assessment rule has been open for public inspection for two weeks, starting on May 13th and continuing through today. To this date, we have not received any appeals. So tonight, the city commission convenes, as the Board of Review, to hear appeals of these assessments, and tonight's the final opportunity for those notified to make their appeal. I will be available in Room 901 to assist those, anybody wishing to file an appeal. So then the assessor and city attorney will review all appeals and report to the city commission back on July 9th, requesting confirmation of this special assessment rule, and if confirmed, the assessments will be invoiced on August 1st. And the special assessment Downtown Area Improvement District is for enhanced services and snow melt services as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I should clarify, so this public hearing is if you have been assessed and you are wishing to appeal that assessment. So if you are here to be heard and you have an appeal to be heard, now's an opportunity to come forward. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close that public hearing. Thank you, Paula. All right, and next that will take us to our public comments. So this is an opportunity to be heard on any other item that is not on the agenda or was not part of our scheduled public hearing. So if you are here to be heard, you can come forward, same rules apply. Three minutes, ask you to share your name, the city you live in, and to make sure your name's listed over there on that clipboard.
I'm David Davis. I live here in the city of Grand Rapids, and I have several things to speak on, starting with the cell towers. We adopt an ordinance today. Can it be amended at a later date or rescinded at a later date to modify what we learn in the future? And this is one of the things that I didn't hear addressed tonight, is that it could be changed as we need to change it. So make the best ordinance that we can for the situation and intend to do what needs to be done at a later date. Next, I continue to do my little program on cleaning up our city streets. I've had a lot of people volunteer that they are practicing some of the things I've mentioned right here at the city commission of having a merchandise bag in their car to put trash in or carry one with them and pick up trash along the way. So I feel there's a little bit of success being done here. And third is a problem that I had recently. Last Thursday, I went to the concert at Rosa Park at Thursday noon. I parked my bike, both my tires were fully inflated to 50 pounds. I came back from the concert about 1:30, 1:40, and my front tire was flat, and I thought that was unusual. I tried to repair it at the place, and I couldn't, so I went back to my apartment to get some tools to fix it. And when I returned, the back tire was flat. And when I tried to pump them up, they had holes in them as big as your pinky. And that, so I figured it was vandalism. And I looked around after the second tire was blown, and I noticed that there were a bunch of these people that are panhandlers begging on the streets. They've accosted me a number of times, and I feel that this panhandling is getting out of control in the city of Grand Rapids. They're begging people. People in Grand Rapids are overly generous, and these people that are panhandling are making more money than people that work. I've heard them talk myself, and it's about time that this changes. We have to inform the people of the city of Grand Rapids not to be so generous, because it's drawing these people to our city. And it's fine to take care of the poor. I agree with that. I do all I can to do the things I need to do. But I'm familiar with the old work ethic. You don't work, you don't eat. And I think it's about time that these people learn that they can't just walk the streets and beg. It's about time they learn to get a job and be responsible adults and that. And so I'm quite upset with what happened there. I'm fortunate that I had a second bike to back me up, and I still continue to ride, but I'm more protective of my bicycle and stuff like that. And I'm sure that I remember.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Your time is up. Thank you. And the answer to your first question is yes, ordinances can be amended in the future. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Wesley Watson, Resident Ada. I've come to you as the Regional Director, Organized Director of Next Gen Michigan. I just want to update you guys on some of the things we've been working on. Special thanks and shout out to the city clerk and his office and deputy clerk. We are going to be organizing a clerk listening session about voters' rights and voters' education coming up. When I was here speaking last before, I mentioned doing it on June 19th. We will be pushing that date back to June 27th due to, we want the clerks to be there, and the clerks will be out of town at a conference. So I just want to update the board and update you guys on what we're working on. We're also going to be working on getting young folks in our community involved within elections. We're going to commit to committing at least six young election workers to work a precinct. And so we want to do that throughout all this, throughout the whole city. The city clerk office relayed that it's 77 precincts here in the city of Grand Rapids, and we want young folks involved at every single precinct. And so that's what we're going to be working on. I will be updating you guys on the details of that event in an email, but thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your partnership.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Bliss, Commissioners, Commissioner Washington, excuse me, City Manager Washington. Willie Patterson, I represent Link Up as the Engagement Director. I have here over 350 signed letters by community members saying that it is critical, for one, that we look into a police chief that will increase police transparency, two, make structural changes that will increase police accountability, and three, expand opportunity for civilian oversight. These themes aren't new. We've been saying these things for over five years, so what we're saying is not new. But we just ask that the committee take into account the studies that have been conducted regarding GRPD, and we recognize that this is a pivotal point in our ability to change the output, the outcomes of the community. We applaud the actions that the Commissioners have taken and the city has taken thus far, but we're asking that that police chief really take a look at what policing can look like in a community in the future. So I don't know who.
Yep, you can give them to the city clerk. And congratulations on your position.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, good to see you. All right, others wish to be heard? Mr. Al Mooney, are you coming up?
Yeah.
So for those of you who don't know, Al Mooney is our former city treasurer and was with the city, what, 30?
Thirty years.
Years? Yep, they're almost 31 years.
Yes. But thank you for that welcome.
Yeah, it's good to see him.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners.
He rested, too.
He does, he does.
And I'm not even driving back and forth to Flint, so I was working in Flint some, but anyway, good evening, and good evening, Mr. Washington, City Manager. Welcome aboard, and I know it's been a good run for you, from what I see, and I know you're a runner, so take that figuratively and enjoy the weather here. It's a lot easier to run here in Michigan than it is in Texas. I did want to speak to the item that was in a letter from the East Town Community Association about the possible ward expansion and redistricting and special elections. And specifically, I guess, in a few words, I think six is enough. I have worked in the city of Lansing, where they had eight city council members. I worked, as I know, Mayor, you just mentioned, over 30 years here with our six city commissioners and mayor, and also worked off and on in the last five years for the city of Flint, both as their interim city treasurer as well as doing some consulting. And there they have nine city council people. Now, in Lansing, there's four at-large members and four wards, and Flint, there's nine different wards. And I can tell you that I've seen some of the downside to having such a dysfunctional setup where you don't have the community building that I've seen here in Grand Rapids. We've had a lot of success, and I know that people are advocating for the city commission to approve a charter change, and I think it would behoove the city commission to look at some of the charter changes that have been before them in the past. And historically, we've had one that changed the meetings from every week to every two weeks, as far as requirement of the city commission, and that was a positive, certainly. We all know about term limits, and people are divided about the pros and cons about that, but as far as having six city commissioners, I think six is enough. And I just wanted to at least mention to you that that's the position I have. I will be going to our Milbrook Neighborhood Association, and we'll be discussing it there. I think it behooves everybody to talk about it and look at the pros and cons, but certainly I think I want to at least point out that my position and my wife Lori's position is that we think six is enough. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
It's good to see you, and thank you for all the work you've done in Flint. I don't know if everyone around this body knows, but since his retirement, Al has been instrumental in helping Mayor Weaver over the last several years, and the city of Flint worked through some really difficult times, and I know they are incredibly grateful for everything you've done for them. So, thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Robert Metzger, actually from East Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I would be here tonight to talk about 312 Prospect Northeast and something, some things I need to follow up on. However, I'm going to table and set aside my personal comments, only in light of the timing and the consideration of the committee, commission in regards to the wireless ordinance, and I thought I could offer some help in understanding the basic technology, because I think sometimes everyone talks past it because they don't understand it, and it really isn't that hard to understand if people take the time to slow down. It's in the spirit that I've always tried to present you with solutions, not just problems. So what's the difference between 4G and 5G? Higher frequency. Higher frequency in and of itself is not a health concern. Where the issue becomes magnetic fields is related to power. Power per square foot, power per square meter, could be measured in watts or joules. Your cell phones are limited to .6 watts output. That's the max. So even if you're in a car, still the max that it can do. The way that that transcends and affects all of us in the switch from 4G to 5G, and the reason you see the increased presentation and density of antennas is the higher the frequency, the less it can travel. The shorter, smaller the skin depth. If you look at Hawaii, you see huge antenna arrays to talk to submarines because they use ultra-long wavelength or low frequency because it travels thousands of miles in the ocean. So the way you compensate for frequency and the lack of it being able to penetrate is you increase the power, or you increase the density of antennas and you increase the distribution. So to make that tangible, power per square meter, this is considered a point source. Think of it as a single point, and as that power radiates out, it's a sphere. And we go back to our basic math. Where's Mr. Mulliam when you need him? Four-thirds pi R cubed. So you take the watts and you apply it to the surface area of that sphere. So hence, the 11 feet comes in to where they deem safe. It has to do with the power per square foot, not the frequency. Don't let the frequency and everyone talking up here try to baffle you with BS, because a lot of technical people like to do that. Keep it simple so you understand where the concern comes in. But as far as the actual technology, still, and young people, it's still about this and whether it's appropriate at their ages to have .6 watts that close to their developing brains. You have to make those decisions as parents. But don't let the difference of 4G to 5G impact how you view it because you don't understand the difference between 4G and 5G. It's simply based on frequency, high frequency, and power, and what you have to compensate based on skin depth.
Thank you, Mr. Metzger.
Hi, welcome. Just a quick thing before I actually speak. I have a quick little PowerPoint that I wanted to show, if you guys in mind I showed it, but if not, I'll just send it to you.
Yeah, okay. How about you send it to us? Does that work? Send it to the full commission?
All right, cool. So I put together a PowerPoint presentation, it was a three-slide presentation. I wanted to show you guys the way that I'm trying to innovate the city. On the PowerPoint, you will actually see two teams that actually wanted to opt in into the tournament. One of them is the 616 Raptors, and the other one is the Lotus Bud Lakers. So community activists and business owners that are actually putting into the tournament. You will see that it has a PowerPoint slide, where there's an app and iPhone that you actually can see that the app, you can actually download the app, you can use it. It'll be a custom website for the league where you can actually see the stats. So say Commissioner Jones wants to make the Urban League kings, and he has a nephew that's in the league, so he's like, his nephew tells him that he scored 20 points. He's like, oh, well, let me see, there's this app right here, and I'm looking to get the league televised, so I'm actually going to be meeting with GRTV to try to do that to make it a little bit more innovative, to build that what I feel like the confidence in the community. I've never heard of a televised basketball league in Grand Rapids, and so especially I feel like at the youth, it's a junior NBA league, and I want to do that for the youth. I think you guys will actually like it, and as you see it, you can kind of see it from your own vision. My vision that I see for the city and kind of innovating that and other businesses that want to get into it. Also, yesterday, I attended the Gulf of Ricca's. I'm a committee. I'm a committee member for the West Grand Neighborhood Organization, so I actually got to chill with some off-duty police officers beyond the badge and actually getting to know that they listen to Future and Drake like I do, they listen to J. Cole like I do, they like to dance just like I do. It was pretty cool to actually really get to chill with them because a lot of people are scared of, like I say, I do things like that and people call me a snitch or a rat or I'm the feds, but I know what I stand for and who I am, and I know that police officers have a tough job to do and that they're human just like me. So it was a different experience to actually, and Officer Cause's wife actually likes me. She actually likes me. I got to chill with the daughter. I got to see her get presented that uniform that her, her father would have had if he happened to have been an officer right now in the line of duty. So I just wanted to say to the public that, um, that every police officer isn't a bad officer. You get to know that person beyond the surface and it's actually get to cool to actually see officers that I've seen in uniform, to actually see them out there in public and be able to get to chill with them and kind of have a friendly conversation. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, DeAndre. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. My name is Josh Lunger. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids and the Senior Director of Government Affairs for the Chamber. I want to thank the commission and staff for this morning's thoughtful discussion that recognizes the significance of the charter and ballot proposals in front of you. I'm here to offer the Grand Rapids Chamber's support for the commission's decision to engage a broader set of voices and examine all available data with diverse stakeholders through a focused charter committee. Altering the city charter and the structure of our government is a risky experiment, and it's one that we can't easily undo if we get it wrong. We must be thoughtful, intentional, and thorough in evaluating alternatives and the potential for unintended consequences. We also really need to drill down into the question of what problem are we trying to solve? Like all cities, Grand Rapids has its challenges, but we also have had a lot of success, and a lot of that is due to the collaborative spirit of this body. And I think that shows just the weight of the decisions in front of us. And so it's wise to approach these questions with prudent caution and taking a brief amount of time to do our due diligence and ensure we better understand all possible outcomes is the right thing to do for the city. We look forward to engaging with you more as this moves forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Josh. All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sergio Sierra Reyes. I'm not officially here as a spokesperson for Minto Costas, although I have a shirt, their shirt on, just was somewhere else, but I wanted to wear it. Although you know that they, they have presented their priorities to you and have communicated their message and have been able to, to mobilize the community most impacted within the Latino community by what I want to address. So I'm, I'm, I am part of the Latino Community Coalition. I serve on the steering committee. And we have had the opportunity as, as a committee to look at, at what's going on with community police relations. And we wanted to, to take a more visible role and, and join our brothers and sisters from other communities of color that have been doing a lot of work and bringing accountability to, to our police department and strengthening, and strengthening that police department in the process. Some of our priorities do fall within the letter that was presented earlier by LINK, within increased transparency, accountability, increased opportunities for civilian oversight, and you'll see within those letters. We want to, we have, our vision is for a stronger police department, that a city of Grand Rapids where all communities of color can feel safe, whether they're walking, they're driving, or, or simply existing as a person of color without fear of, from any institution and community. And so I just wanted to state our position and support the letter, the letters and the positions presented in, in the letters by, presented by LINK. That committee is formed of multiple stakeholders and community, and it's a collaborative process that we, we hope to continue to invite other communities, other people from community and residents onboard. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll make sure everyone sees the language in these letters. Thanks. Hi, welcome.
So I just wanted to kind of speak on what the gentleman said a little bit ago. More frequencies doesn't equal safe. And having these small cells installed in our neighborhoods, in our cities, and on, like just everywhere, I don't want my children playing underneath a small cell antenna in our yard. I know you guys understand the concern. I don't know that everybody else understands the concern, but these things are going to go on our utility poles. They're going to be in front of our homes. We live on College. We've got a home that's a little bit elevated on a hill. The utility pole is right out front of our yard. My kid's bedroom faces it. I could throw a football and hit it. I'm, I can't keep my kids here with the potential for something like a small cell to go onto that utility pole. I don't, I can't. So, you know, I, I felt like he was kind of trying to downplay the dangers a little bit, and I don't, that's not right. People need to know, I can opt out of this. I can shut my phone off. I can put it in airplane mode. I can't opt out of a small cell directly in front of my home. I'm forced to deal with it, you know? I don't know how everybody else feels about playing under a small cell antenna, but I can't abide by it. I can't put my children at that risk. So that's it. Just wanted to kind of rebuttal a little.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, good evening. My name is Ladonna Norman. I'm a community advocate in Grand Rapids. I'm here to continually address the housing crisis. I got a call on Friday from a female at Spectrum Health. She was recently diagnosed with cancer. She is 97 pounds. She is homeless, and she is helpless. And she was given a piece of paper and she was let out the door. I have been calling 211, Salvation Army, any resources that I can think about, and I've been doing this for almost four years, so I'm quite familiar with our local resources, recycled resources. There's a problem here. When you're helpless and poor and you can't find a place to live. If I recall, some years ago, there was some kind of partnership with Mel Trotter and St. Mary's. And that partnership was to have a shelter available for people who are transitioning out of the hospital that may need attention. When I mentioned this to the social worker, she had no clue what I was talking about, but I knew what I was talking about. I find it quite disturbing that we still have a housing crisis. I find it quite disturbing that we have all these organizations and no common ground to stand and no support. I find it very disturbing that there are still multiple families and small units. I find it very disturbing that we are in a day and age where we, the classification, people fight for different classifications, financial classifications. And the people here put in place to help us, they're not helping us. They're just here for a face in a picture. And I'm asking you to advocate for the voiceless and the homeless and do a full investigation of why 211 exchange, you're on hold and it's being, that people are getting hung up on, why people are afraid to report simple, um, simple things that need fixing and, and the residents, they're afraid to report that for fear they'll be homeless. And then, as you know, I explained, I shared something that I'm in that position where I'm transitioning, and I'm kind of like blackballed from all these places because I advocate for the homeless. And so all these things are disturbing, and all these things are more reason for me to keep coming back and keep informing you and keep educating you and keep encouraging you to stand out and be the change we need in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Norman. Hello, Mr. Howe, welcome.
Hi, Jim Howe, city of Grand Rapids. I'm coming today because I heard this morning when we were, you all were talking about the obsolete property rehabilitation that was passed tonight for Scott and Associates. Commissioner Lanier asked about the affordability, which was asked the previous week of being at 80% and if it could go lower. I want to make sure that we're always aware of people's words and how they use them. So in the rep's reply, he said approximately 80% as a starting point, which raises more flags to me as, by starting point, do you mean then going then lower or then higher, depending on how quickly you finish and develop your building? And then in the discussion that took place after, Commissioner O'Connor said that without a subsidy, it's outside of our control to mandate, it's kind of, sorry, kind of outside of our control to mandate what rent is going to be. I wanted to just clarify that, that you'll like this. On March 28th, 2019, the state reevaluated the inclusionary zoning rule and clarified number four now in that section. In the, in the inclusionary law says, "This section does not limit the power of local government unit to adopt an ordinance or a resolution to implement a plan to use voluntary incentives and agreements to increase the supply of moderate or low-cost private residential property available for lease." In that, I'm taking as them mandating you to use your ability to set up these agreements, which we already have in place. However, there's many options on the table. So I'm recommending that with this urgent need we have, that we reevaluate the ordinances we have in effect for the NEZ, the obsolete, and the brownfield credit, and bring more attention to creating more affordable housing in our city. They've clearly said that we can do that, and there's no question now to the ability to hone those down to be just those instead of other options that might be easily available for them depending on their location. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ms. Row. All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to close that public comment period, and I will turn to my colleagues, and I'll start down here with Commissioner Repart. Since this will be the last commission meeting we see you at for a little while.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I just want to just make sure that everybody knows, unfortunately, I'm going to miss the next two meetings. My extended family planned a trip before I got elected. That's how far ahead my in-laws plan ahead. But thanks, everybody, for coming out, and thanks for the grace to be able to enjoy that vacation with my family.
I assume you'll still be available by phone and email.
I will be, right up until I leave.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, so I'll be gone from the ninth to the 24th, so I missed two meetings, but I'll be on point right, right up until and right after I get back.
Thank you, thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody, and welcome back. You had a, you had a trip and, and were out last week, so we're glad to have you back.
Yes, ma'am. I was in the state of Israel. I just want to say thank you to everybody that's come out tonight. We've had a long day. All the information that we received has been good. I appreciate the community's voice. Like most parents, I'm concerned as well about what takes place with the FCC, but there are times when some things are definitely out of our control, we have to be in compliance. But I think that as a commission, we do have some power and some control to monitor things, and I think we should take action with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and for those who are here this week and last for elevating this conversation around 5G, and hopefully we can continue to, to watch it, or we will continue to watch it and communicate as well with the FCC.
Thank you. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out and for feedback and the comments that we had. And again, the staff presentation, I very appreciate that. Good night.
Bishop?
I just want to make mention that our, our good friends from McKelvey, Merchant, and Associates are in the audience, and we hired those folks today to help represent the city of Grand Rapids in our ongoing legislative efforts in Lansing, and just look forward to working with, with them and hopefully moving the ball forward for Grand Rapids.
Yes, well said, thank you.
Those guys we hired.
Yes, mayor, I want to thank actually all of my colleagues and based on our discussion on this morning to move forward with the creation of a, of a committee to, again, take a deeper dive around the two issues that had been brought before us. I also want to recognize and, and thank both the GR Democracy Initiative and Empower the Citizens for the work they've put into advocating for their position. But again, I want to thank my colleagues for recognizing the importance of doing all that we can to make sure that we minimize the number of unintended consequences and pull together a group of individuals of diverse representation to, to, with the, again, established timeline, but to take a deeper dive into two issues that are critically important that, again, would change what our charter currently states. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Commissioner, for, for your work and thinking through and, and helping give input into a potential process. So, thank you. City clerk?
Nope.
City attorney? City manager?
Thank you, mayor. I, I wish to thank with much gratitude all the staff and the tremendous amount of work that they do behind the scenes to make this, this day possible, from the committees to what we deliberate tonight. And I want them to know how much I appreciate their dedication, often after hours and on weekend and time away from their families. So I appreciate all of their work. Want to thank the commissioners for your, your dedication and deliberation to public for coming out, and also want to encourage the public to come out again on Thursday night from 6:30 to 8:30 at Caesar Chavez Elementary School to meet the finalists for our police chief and get to engage them as well as hear their thoughts about policing in this community. And so please come out and participate in that and provide me your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes.
May I do a safe plug because we won't have a chance at the pitch night?
Of course you can.
So I, you know, thanks, city manager, because that reminded me I wanted to pitch something myself. So Tuesday, June 25th, from 6:00 to 8:30 PM, we will have our next Safe Task Force Pitch and Highlight Night. So any of you have ideas about how to reduce violence in our city? If you are an individual, you can pitch up to five minutes and could be granted up to $1,000. And if you are a part of a nonprofit and you have an idea and we're looking for creative ways to reduce violence, you can pitch and be granted up to $10,000. The contact information is 456-3497 if you have interest, and you do have to apply in advance to be able to pitch. And our safe targeted age group is 15 through 24-year-olds, so whatever programming initiative has to be tied to that target age group. So get your ideas together, get creative, and hopefully come out and pitch.
Thank you for that reminder. And with that, we are adjourned. Everyone drive safe.